Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Library of Virginia. My name is Tamika Hobbs and I'm the Program in Education Coordinator. And it is my great pleasure to introduce our two speakers for today's book talk, Mildred Robinson and Richard Bonney. But before I do that, I wanted to bring to your attention a few upcoming sponsored and cosponsored programs that the library has coming up in a few weeks here. First and foremost, on February 26th in the evening at 6:00 PM, we will be hosting our inaugural African-American Trailblazers in Virginia History reception. This is an inaugural year, first year for this program here at the library. It has come out of the creation of posters, a traveling exhibition, several other education programs, but it is free and open to the public and we definitely want to extend the invitation to all of you to join us for that event. Among the eight honorees, there are three of them that are living too that will be here with us. They include NASA astronaut Lila Melvin, who's a native of Lynchburg, Virginia, and Claudia Whitewaf, Alexander Whitewaf, I should say, who is the publisher and editor of The Road of Tribute. But we're very excited to have them here and it should be a snowed event and hope you can join us. Evening before that, we are actually cosponsoring a tribute concert honoring the legacy of John Seephus, who is another one of our honorees, a pioneer in Piedmont blues, world-renowned musician. But we will be cosponsoring with the River City Blues Society, a concert at Capitol Ale House on Wednesday, February 25th, starting at 6:00 PM. Tickets for that event are $5. You can visit their website, wegotblues.org, we got blues, Google it, you can find it for more information about that program, but it should be a really, really fun event. Onto the events for today. Our authors are, have published or put together a book entitled, "The Law Touched Their Hearts: A Generation Remembers Brown, the Board of Education," which is published by the University of Vanderbilt Press, Vanderbilt University Press. In this book, they have surveyed 1,000 law professors who were born between 1936 and 1954 and have compiled what are very personal and compelling stories about school integration and the Brown v. Board decision and its implications. Richard Bonney, one of the co-authors, is an expert in the field of criminal law and procedure, mental health, and drug law, public health law, and bioethics. He is the Harrison Foundation Professor of Medicine and Law, Hunter &amp; Williams Research Professor, and Professor of Psychiatry and Neurobehavioral Science, stress in that real fast, at the University of Virginia. His academic colleagues and public service are just far too vast to mention here, but I will say that he received the Thomas Jefferson Award from the University of Virginia in 200, I'm sorry, 2007, the university's highest honor. Our other guest today, Mildred Robinson, is the Henry L. and Grace Doherty Charitable Foundation Professor of Law. She received her Juris Doctorate from Howard University School of Law in 1968 and her Master of Laws degree from Harvard University School of Law in 1971. She came to the University of Virginia after 12 years at Florida State University, my alma mater, goes to someone else, where she received the President's Award for Teaching Excellence and where she also served as Associate Dean for Academic Affairs. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me to welcome Richard Bonney and Mildred Robinson.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much and thank you to the library for inviting us here today. This is our first public outing after working on this project or with this project for a number of years. And so if it seemed a little rough in places, we apologize. We are perfecting our spiel, if you will. We are a part of a generation of public school students during, at the time, or immediately in the, after the Brown decision was announced in 1954. I'm sure that all of you know that that was the decision declaring public schools segregation unconstitutional. Richard and I connected early on, I think. I came to the University of Virginia Law School in 1984 after having served on the faculty at Florida State in Tallahassee for 12 years. And somehow, I'm still not sure exactly how, we wound up talking about this decision. We're both Southerners. Richard grew up in Virginia and I grew up in South Carolina. And this for us was a common experience, at least the experience having been public school students during that time. And so for some reason, we started talking about this and identified our common experience and it was a common connection. And this is a conversation that we've had from time to time over the years, not consistently, not even as a professional matter, because neither of us are constitutional law teachers. You've heard a little bit about what Richard does. I teach tax courses and I love doing that. And constitutional law, to tell you quite frankly, gives me a headache. And so it's not a matter of being called law scholars, it's just this common experience. So about the time, during the time when the 50th anniversary of the Brown decision was approaching, that we struck up this conversation again and, and agreed that the case had had a quite powerful impact on the lives of us both. We wondered, what about other schoolchildren from the same period? Now, that's a huge question, because there were 17 million students in segregated schools, de jure segregated schools around that time. It's one thing to wonder what they think and it's quite another to come up with any way of trying to get access to them and asking these questions. So we kicked around a little bit and finally thought about the group about which we know most, law professors. If we could identify cohort from the academy, we might be able to get access to some of this information. So after thinking about it a bit more, we came up with a way of doing that. We got access to the professional addresses of law professors who were born between 1936 and 1954. And that would put us in the time period that we wanted. And we prepared letters and we wrote to 4,000-plus of our colleagues, asking them what they remember about the decision, if anything, what effect the decision had on their patterns of education, if any, and inviting any who wished to, to submit a narrative. Not an analysis of the decision, but a narrative, a personal narrative, talking about their experiences during that period. We got close to a 25% response rate, which I understand is phenomenal from the statisticians. People were anxious to talk about this and even if they had nothing to say, and we got a large number that said, "We really don't have anything at all to say. We don't remember, it didn't affect us," you know, variety of reasons for not having anything that's useful to say. But even that, of course, is useful. But more importantly, we got narratives. And those narratives ultimately generated a manuscript, which we now have as this book, "Law Touched Our Hearts: A Generation Remembers Brown Versus Board of Education." Why law professors? Because maybe we're looking for the common denominator, this experience, this educational experience that we have all in common, because we were confident that if they did have something to say, they could say it well. And I think that if you decide to take a look at the book, you'll find that these are really beautiful pieces for any of them and they're all wonderful, even the two of us. But the, we were, we were very pleased to have them and we, we were buoyed by the response that we had, both from our institution and from the academy at large. Not only did we receive narratives, we received letters, emails, good wishes, encouragement to pursue the project. And so I'm glad that we now have produced what you see here. The narratives are forty in number. They come from all over the country. They're predominantly from the people who grew up in the South or who worked in public schools in the South during that period, but they are literally from all over the country, Florida to New York to California. They are men and women, we are black and white. They talk about a variety of experiences. Some are anecdotes, they talk about an isolated experience. Others take a longer view, ranging from a year to a decade, to the point at which we now find ourselves in our lives. There are a variety of perspectives, a variety of experiences, and I think there's a lot here that has been shared, that we attempt to share, and which we hope will find receptive for years.
Yeah, I'd just add a few observations to the things that Mildred said. One thing I think that has struck us about this project all along is that the feelings that we had about how important the experience of growing up during that time was to us and to the way that our careers developed, also is very, very widely shared among this core cohort of people. And, you know, when we sent this survey out, the survey was really an excuse to get to the last part, which was, "Do you have a story you want to tell about this?" And so, but we got some data and the data are actually reported in the book about, you know, people's actual experiences. But we had this kind of open invitation at the end to, you know, "Is there anything else that you would like to add?" And, you know, of course, people would, you know, have some qualitative responses at that point about their experiences. And then we said, you know, "Would you be interested if we put together a collection of essays about this, or, you know, sort of memoirs really about this experience, whether you would be interested in doing it?" And, you know, we had this very, very enthusiastic response from a lot of people. And, you know, I think what we touched was kind of a deep, deeply felt desire to think back and reflect on the experience, to preserve, you know, those memories, and then to reflect on, on the course of subsequent history, which of course, you know, has been transformative, I think, for a lot of people and I think for our society as a whole. Another thing that I, that is noteworthy about this, and, you know, we are here talking to you about this book, but we are not the authors of this book. I mean, this is, you know, I feel like we're cheerleaders, you know, for the quality of the, of the essays that people, you know, and narratives that people have produced here. We actually do have one of the contributors right here, Larry Palmer, who's a longtime friend of ours, has been in law teaching all these years, just as we have, and is now teaching at William &amp; Mary. And so I, I had the experience of, of course, reading them as they came in, when people were submitting them. And of course, there were little rough edges here and there, but, you know, we were just struck from the beginning about the variety, the intensity, and the deeply personal nature of, you know, of many of these, these narratives. And they really do provide a mosaic, I think, of the kind of, the human experience of children, you know, during this, you know, quite tumultuous kind of period of, of our history. When I finally sort of sat down at one point, when we were really finally getting the manuscript ready for the press and sort of assembled them and read them, you know, back to back, I truly was amazed about how interesting they were. The, you know, you would think that these are individual stories, you would read a couple of them and you'd put it aside, but I have to say, you know, I just wanted to keep turning the pages because they were really so revealing. So, as I said, we're really quite glad that we pushed this project because it clearly could have fallen off the rails at any, many points away along the way, as Larry himself will remember. Another thing is about the title. The, I'm not sure we had a working title. I guess we probably did something prosaic, you know, like "The Brown Generation Remembers" or something like that.
Voices of law professors.
Right. And, you know, you just would go to sleep. And Mildred came up with the idea of this echo of comments that President Eisenhower had made about the, in anticipation of the Brown versus Board decision. The basic theme of his comments was that basically segregation is entrenched and for the Supreme Court to try to change it would be really a very, very difficult task and could be obviously a fairly divisive one for the country. And that you can't change men's hearts with the law. That was basically, and the phrase, and he repeated it often in many of the comments that he made about Brown. There was one particular dinner that he had convened at the White House where Chief Justice Warren was there at dinner and also actually the advocates in the, in the case for the Southern states. And he made that comment at that dinner and Chief Justice Warren actually recorded it in his own memoir. I think the whole point of this is that law truly did touch the hearts of the young people who were in school during that period of time. It really has made a profound difference in, in many lives. And obviously, we know from the, you know, the history that ensued, you know, that there has been this transformation in our, our country as well. Do you want to?
Yes, I'd like to add to that. I'm glad that you brought up those points. They're very important and they do help situate the book. But we also want to mention why we think it has continued importance. I think it's, it's easy to come to believe that perhaps at this point in time, we really don't need to think about Brown anymore, that it's a point in our history that we've now passed and we've confronted at least some of those problems successfully, some of the racial estrangement that existed then successfully. And I think that is undoubtedly true. But at the same time, I think that it's, it's, there also are continuing problems. I'm going to read you a couple of paragraphs from the introduction. And when we speak to this, we don't try to draw any lessons from the narratives themselves, we allow them to speak for themselves and we think that that can be more, that they do that more than adequately. But in thinking of the broader meaning for this effort at this time, we speak to the recent Supreme Court case, Parents Involved in Community Schools versus Seattle School District. In that case, the closely divided court, five to four, held that race alone cannot be taken into consideration in student school assignment. The Seattle School District seeking to maintain racial violence in particular high schools used race as a tiebreaker to allocate available slots. Four of the five justices in the majority said that the Constitution bans the use of race in making student assignments for all purposes. The fifth justice in the majority, Justice Kennedy, would allow the use of race in plans narrowly tailored to achieve a compelling government interest. He did not, however, provide any insight into how such plans might be structured. In light of this, because of continuing residential segregation, the decision denies school districts the latitude they seek to achieve and maintain diverse class groups as a compelling government interest per se. Three out of ten Americans today are people of color. Demographers estimate a majority of us will be people of color by the middle of this century. As a matter of fact, they moved that date up and now estimate that that will happen by the mid-2040s. Unlike 1954, the racial divide is no longer along black and white lines. Rather, Americans increasingly range across the spectrum of human complexion and cultural experience. Genuinely, multiracial classrooms might do more for achieving the Brown vision for all children than anything the law has been able to achieve. Do the lessons drawn from Brown remain relevant in this troubled environment? We think the answer is yes. Not because Brown provides convincing answers to what seemingly remain intractable problems, but because it provides a continuing inspiration, an expectation really, to find effective solutions to them. Brown represents a dual commitment to erase wrongs rooted in the birth of our nation and also to achieve a more perfect union. In short, Brown looks both backward and forward, and so do the essays in this collection.
Well, I couldn't say it better myself. So I'll just amend, you know, those thoughts as well. I think one thing we wondered as we looked at this is, you know, beyond the just inherent virtues of collecting a memoir of a generation of people, you know, what larger lessons are there here? And I think one is that reflecting back on this experience 50 years ago and then, you know, as we have matured as a nation, I think it helps to enrich our understanding of ourselves as a national community and our identity, you know, as a people, because I think it is surely the case that we are a more perfect union now. I mean, obviously, a lot, a lot of progress yet to be made, including the ways that Mildred just said. But as someone who's lived through that period and some people here have as well, we know that this is a very different society and certainly that's true in the South. I'd also, you know, there was, obviously could be no better evidence than that than Barack Obama being elected President of the United States. And I noted this yesterday in a conversation we were having with someone else. It was symbolically very moving for me to be, having received the advanced copies of these, of these books and inscribing them to various people to be doing it on January the 20th of 2009. So it is a sheer, I think, wonderment really of, you know, how, how the nation has changed, notwithstanding all the turmoil and so on that occurred there. I make a point in my own essay here that if any of you are local Virginians and maybe even born in Richmond, I was born in Richmond and, you know, a lot of my family was from here. I grew up in Norfolk. And, you know, my experience was basically kind of a moral awakening during the period of, of desegregation because of massive resistance. And it really has had a profound impact on my life in a way that I describe in, in the, in the chapter. And I just wanted to leave the South and never come back. And I think it's certainly an indication of how things really did change. And, you know, really, and when you look back on it, you know, how quickly, I mean, again, there's so much more to be done. I don't want to suggest, you know, overdraw this, but, you know, here I am and I wouldn't want to live anywhere else than here. So that's, I think that there are reflections of that kind here that do help to, help us understand by recalling those experiences, you know, during the period of segregation and to, to think of ourselves, you know, as a, as a nation and the ways in which Mildred was just saying that we, you know, we can't, we can't ever, you know, put race entirely behind us. But I think we understand something more about the pluralism of our country than, in a different way certainly than was true then. I think another point about the story is it does teach us something about law. You know, law is an instrument of, it's a, it's a, it's a human institution and it can be, the law can be just as flawed as the people who make it. It was, obviously gave us slavery and Jim Crow and the laws of segregation and massive resistance here. But it's also obviously an instrument for moral education and inspiration. And I think that's what Brown and, you know, all the, the period of the civil rights era, I think, really meant to us. And, you know, historians can argue about whether Brown, the decision in Brown itself propelled us forward or set us back. I mean, there's an argument about that because of the, the resistance that it galvanized in. But, you know, for us as children, you know, during that period of time and then reflecting back on what, on the decision itself, you know, I think of, I think we think of it as a transformative, you know, exercise in, in moral education. And law can sometimes do that. And I, surely, Brown is one of the most important decisions ever handed down by the United States Supreme Court, you know, notwithstanding, as I said, the historians' arguments about it. So, and I think all of that is, you know, kind of emerges pretty clearly, you know, in these essays. So we have a little time here. Did you want to add anything more to, to that or do you think we should slide into the videos? So we are prepared to read a couple of these, one that we picked by a woman who did not grow up in the South and one from a man who did grow up in, in the South, in Mississippi. And, you know, we're prepared to read them to you, but I don't know whether there are things that people, before we launch into that, might, you know, other things that you might want to ask about, about the project? Or any thoughts about that? Tamika? Yes?
My question. What was the procedure that you used to, and the criteria you used to choose the authors that you included in the book?
We didn't. It's all spontaneous. We received, as I said, a number of narratives in response to the invitation to submit and people did. We didn't, I don't think we approached a single individual to ask for a narrative. These are all freely offered. We had a few more than what you see here and if we had had our way, they all would have been here. This was tug, push, pull and tug between us and our editor who said, "Too many." And we said, "No, no, no, we want a national picture presented. We want this mosaic." And so we ultimately compromised at 40. But the spread that we got, both in terms of the national coverage, in terms of gender, in terms of race, is all completely fortuitous.
And again, we have been amazed from the beginning about how wonderful they are. There were a couple, I have to say, there were a couple of things that we received that were little fragments, you know, that we'd say, "Well, that's probably not going to go anywhere." But the ones that people actually did spend the time reflecting back, they all had a richness, you know, of their own. I mean, we obviously did do some editing to kind of, you know, smooth some of the rough edges, but, you know, it's just one of the most amazing things. And that's, again, why I said, I was so amazed when I actually sat down and read them all together about how they fit, you know, again, as this kind of collective, exercise in collective memory. So.
I think I'd also mention too, just for the record, that, you know, of course, there are a range of law schools in the United States. There are almost 200. And our contributors are in fact of these, ranging from Yale, which is of course the best law school in the country, on doubt.
Well, I might separate them.
Well, you may, of course. Yeah.
I have actually thought of a great many questions, but I will ask, were there any overwhelmingly compelling themes or great surprises that these narratives revealed? There are themes and when I start to talk about the one that I'm going to read, I'm going to say a couple of things that I think, you know, are kind of recurrent. Surprises? I don't know.
I think if I were surprised by anything, it would be the depth of feeling that comes through time after time after time and from all over and without regard to race or gender.
Yeah, actually, so here's a surprise. I don't know what your background is and how many lawyers or law professors you know. You wouldn't actually expect that, you know, this particular cohort of people with the backgrounds that we have had would be able to produce such touching and compelling narratives, you know? I mean, this is, these are deeply personal and, you know, we bring a certain perspective, you know, on, you know, law and the kinds of things that I've been observing here. But these aren't obviously essays that were written by lawyers or law professors. You know, they were written by, you know, a collection of human beings that grew up in this, you know, grew up in this environment, thoughtful and reflective, you know, people. And that, again, I mean, I keep saying how surprising, you know, the quality of it was and that's, I guess, what I would, what I would say. You don't think that these, mine is an exception, it actually talks about massive resistance and, and the cases, the cases that were being litigated at the time. So you knew that was written by a lawyer. But, but by and large, that's not the case. And I think that, again, as I said, I'm just a cheerleader for, you know, for, for the quality of the narrative from that standpoint. So that might be a surprise. Okay, you want to?
Sure. Today, I'm going to read to you a narrative submitted by Catherine Urbanya, who is on the faculty at William &amp; Mary. She grew up in Wisconsin and her narrative is entitled, "Entering Another's Circle." Although I grew up in Beloit, Wisconsin, far from notoriously segregated South, I still experienced racial segregation, separation as I began first grade, five years after the United States Supreme Court's 1954 Brown decision. Despite having students from different racial backgrounds, many classrooms in Beloit did not reflect this diversity. Even as a child, I saw adults drawing circles, delineating who could enter and who could not, separating whites from others, males from females, and those who had a correct understanding of God from those who didn't. About one-third of my classmates were black, but I rarely saw them. My elementary school separated children according to perceived academic ability. My class, comprised of those children thought to exhibit greater promise, included only white children. In junior high school, only my homeroom and gym classes included both black and white children. When I entered high school, I did have a black classroom in my band class. Tracy played trombone and said very little. My high school friends spoke of another black student named Karen Bolton. Karen wasn't in my classes, but she too was enrolled in the academic track. My friends described Karen as being like a white person. My friends described Karen as being like a white person. Her mom, a black woman, provided career counseling to many students, including me. I never learned much about Mrs. Bolton or her background, but my life would ultimately take a different course in significant parts because of her. Mrs. Bolton, like several of my teachers, encouraged me to go to college. I did not know what college was, but I kept hearing that it was somewhere I needed to go. My father, the youngest child in a large immigrant family from Slovenia, had dropped out of school as a high school sophomore. My mother, another child of immigrant parents, had finished high school but only because she fled the family farm at age thirteen, cleaning houses to support herself. Neither of them knew what college was, much less that it was something that their children should pursue. My father worked as a machinist in a factory that provided a relatively steady check, one that eventually permitted my parents to buy a small house with an upstairs apartment rental. Despite our strained family finances, my father refused to allow my mother to work outside the home, even when the kids grew up. As head of household, his word was law. My mother stayed home caring for two boys and two girls. A fifth child, a girl, died in infancy while my mother was in a psychiatric hospital. My father set the limits on our family's associations and he drew a rather small circle. One day, when I was a teenager, I heard my mother tell prospective tenants that she had already rented our upstairs apartment when in fact she had not. After shutting the door, she explained to me with great frustration that my father did not permit her to rent to them, Negroes. My father also barred his children from playing with black friends. I well remember the day my father sent home my sister's black girlfriend, Yvette Bolton. He told my sister not to play with Negroes. The smallness of her circle made no sense to me. My father also decided that only my brothers would learn to drive the family car. My mother never learned to drive and my father refused to permit my sister and me to learn because girls did not need this skill. She finally learned to drive in her twenties, she reports. One of the males in my family would have to drive the females when we needed to go somewhere farther than we could walk. My father would sometimes drive us, but generally only in the morning because alcohol interceded thereafter. On Sunday mornings, my father would drive our family to the local Lutheran church. He stopped attending with us though because the Lutheran minister would excoriate Catholics, including my father, for their misguided theology. Meanwhile, the Catholic Church would embrace neither of my parents because my father had not received an annulment following his divorce from his first wife. When I was in grade school, my family experienced significant financial distress. My father lost his job at health insurance. My mother had a number of stays in a psychiatric hospital, imposing debts that we could not pay. Fortunately, the government provided us with free food. I fondly remember the large silver and blue plastic wrapped chunks of American cheese, lots of wheeled butter, and large cans of creamy peanut butter, jelly beef, and pork. I fretted about having so few clothes to wear to school. My mother assured me that my classmates would not tease me for having only two outfits to wear as long as they were clean and I kept myself well groomed. She taught me to bathe myself using the bathroom sink. I could take baths on occasion, provided that I did not use too much water. Through the encouragement of my teachers, I began saving for this thing called college, recognizing that there would be no family money to send me. I regularly cleaned a neighbor's house, babysat, taught music lessons, and worked in a department store as a checkout clerk. My little bank account began to grow. My mother, to her credit, insisted that I keep all my earnings for my college aspirations rather than use them to support the family. During the fall of my senior year of high school, Mrs. Bolton, the school counselor, called me to her office to discuss college. She encouraged me to apply to Beloit College for early decision, a term I did not know. When Beloit College accepted me, it gave me generous financial aid and work-study opportunities. Mrs. Bolton reviewed the financial aid package and told me that I could make it work if my parents could contribute the value of the tax deduction that they received for claiming me as a dependent. When my parents declined to make anything toward my college expenses, Mrs. Bolton angrily told me to tell my parents that they could no longer declare me as a dependent if they made no contribution toward my living expenses. I never expected my parents to be able to help, so I didn't tell them what Mrs. Bolton had said. I ultimately made up the financial shortfall by working extra hours. When I arrived at Beloit College, I met my roommate Lindsay, who was from New York. Lindsay had already taken college class, classes as a high school student. She explained to me that I had to go to the college bookstore to buy my course books. I had thought that the teachers would give us our books as they did in high school. Lindsay also gave me her heavy blue wool coats to keep me warm during the winter. At the end of the first year, Lindsay invited me to go home with her to New York. I declined, only because I did not know how to receive such generosity from another human being. With an expanding group of teachers and classmates encouraging me, I graduated from Beloit College in nineteen seventy-five. Later, I earned a master's degree in English and a law degree, and I eventually began a career as a law professor. None of this would have happened had not several people, particularly Mrs. Bolton, encouraged me to pursue higher education. My parents did not know much about the value of college, but thankfully, others in my life did. They showed me the path of education, one that has allowed me to live with financial stability, vocational fulfillment, and opportunities my parents could not have conceived of. I have wondered how my life would have unfolded had I been born black. Who would have been there to guide a poor black child from a family on welfare, one with alcohol abuse and significant mental illnesses? Maybe things would have worked out the same way, but I'm not so sure. For the most part, blacks and whites in Beloit in the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties lived in separate worlds. Thankfully, there were a few exceptions, like Mrs. Bolton, the black school counselor who embraced a poor white girl and encouraged her to dream of college. In nineteen fifty-four, the United States Supreme Court struck a blow against separate racial circles, declaring that separate is not equal. It explained that separate spheres robbed children, especially black children, of the opportunities that lie inside the circles of those who live in privilege. I think the court was right. I will never forget a sermon I heard in nineteen ninety-seven by an Episcopal priest in Atlanta. He invited us to look at the circle of people in our lives and to consider whether our circles were too small. I realized that the circle of my life had come to include many people who did not seem on the surface to resemble me. Friends with different racial and economic backgrounds, vastly divergent religious perspectives, and different expressions of their sexuality. As I delighted in the richness of my circle, I also felt sad for my deceased parents who had not experienced this fullness of life, having been shaped by their culture and illnesses. I also thought of Mrs. Bolton. Mrs. Bolton wasn't in the accepted circle of my childhood, but she gave me the greatest gift of all.
So there are a couple of things that actually emerge from that story that are similar to themes that I think occur in other ones, including the one that I want to read. One is, you have this, as I noted earlier, this kind of period of moral awakening that I think is touched in, on various ways in the stories. And of course, less so in this one than the one I'm going to read you. There's also observations, as you look around and you notice the patterns, the ingrained patterns of, of the culture and, and life that involve these patterns of prejudice and racism and become sensitive to them. But, and so that's about the culture around you. But I think one thing that comes through in that story and, and the one that I'm going to describe here as well is that, of course, your family, your nuclear family is embedded in that culture. And inevitably, in many of these stories, it could be implicit criticism, you know, of your parents and family. And I would think that that is very hard, okay, for the people, you know, to write back as they're reflecting on this and are thinking about awakening to these problems and, and how it was important for them to change and so on, that you're also criticizing your own family. That, that happens a lot here. And another one is, of course, they're heroes in many of these stories as well. And of course, we have one, Mrs. Bolton, in that one. And you'll hear some of that in the story that I'm going to read. So this is Lewis Burke, who, as you'll hear, was born in Mississippi in nineteen forty-eight and is now a law professor at the University of South Carolina. Like most of the families who lived in the Beacon Street Housing Project, my family ate its meals around a bright colored, chrome edged Formica kitchen table. On Mondays, we often ate biscuits with tomato gravy, butter beans, rice, and Sunday's leftover fried chicken. That probably was the menu on the day that many whites called Black Monday, when our local newspaper, the Laurel Leader Call, ran a headline, "Segregation Ended by High Court." To a young boy who had just turned six and was going to start school the next fall, my father's rantings at the supper table were more heated than usual. He usually cursed Eisenhower, but now it was the communists on the Supreme Court. From May seventeenth, nineteen fifty-four until today, I have often reflected on that day and on the impact of Brown versus Board on my life. My father worked in a mill. His family had roots in Clarendon County, South Carolina, but instead of returning to South Carolina after World War Two, he moved to Mississippi, where he had met my mother during army training. She was from Clark County, just south of Meridian. He was a high school dropout and she was her family's first high school graduate. He was the son of a sometime employed carpenter and staunch Democrat. She was the daughter of a backwoods Southern Baptist minister who idolized both Bob Jones and FDR. During the Depression, both my parents ate vegetables and chickens raised by their mothers. My mother was religious and credited FDR with saving the nation and the world. My father was not religion, excuse me, was not religious, and his politics were those of his fellow South Carolinian, Strom Thurmond. My mother taught me at a very early age that nigger was a bad word. I had heard her debate my grandfather on the biblical basis of segregation and also question our family minister about the morality of segregation. She was no liberal, but she was too intelligent and compassionate not to believe that Jim Crow was wrong. Although I had few interactions with black people in my, in any case, my mother's admonitions and concerns caused me to question the mores of Mississippi. When I started first grade, integration was as much on everyone's mind as polio, nuclear bombs, and television. Integration was not a daily worry, but it hung in the air like the humidity of an August day. A local newspaper had said it might be months or perhaps years away. A city bus carried me past my neighborhood school through the mill village to the modern Prentice Elementary on the north side of town. But uncertainty also rode with me to school each day. And even we first graders wondered when "it" was coming. Soon, "it" became more than brown. Civil rights was the news that never left the supper table. In the summer of nineteen fifty-five, Emmett Till was lynched. The bus boycott in Montgomery was big news. After second grade, the fear of integration directly affected my life, my daily life. In order to avoid providing housing to black schoolchildren, the Laurel Bus System quit transporting any children to school. So in third grade, I was transferred to Beacon Street Elementary School. It was a short walk, but the school was crowded beyond belief. On the first day, we were all crammed into the auditorium because the school was not ready for all the new students. After some renovations, we were moved to overcrowded classrooms. My father blamed the change on the neighbors. The third grade was further interrupted when my father gave a full-time job, my father got a full-time job working with the Mississippi National Guard. Brown and civil rights moved right along with my family and the Formica supper table, a hundred miles south to Gulfport. We watched it on television. As the fifth grade ended in May of nineteen fifty-nine, Charles Mac Parker was lynched in Poplarville, less than sixty miles from our home. One Sunday afternoon, soon thereafter, my father loaded my mother, my brother, and me into the old Buick and drove to the bridge outside Poplarville so we could see the place where it happened. Our insensitive voyeurism still punctured. In the sixth grade, I followed world and national news closely. My mother subscribed to Time, Life, and Book magazines, so I was exposed to the views of people from outside Mississippi. I watched every broadcast of Undee Brinkley and all the NBC specials on civil rights. In November of nineteen fifty-nine, Ruby Bridges desegregated a New Orleans school under a court order. Watching the nightly news, I saw and heard the hatred spewing from the mouths of those white mothers. The federal judges in New Orleans were heroes to me. The civil rights movement was creating a revolution in America and lawyers were playing a major role. So in the sixth grade, I decided to become a lawyer. My views were being shaped by the horrors exposed by the media, but my father's views were not. He was still talking about Brown. "When is integration coming?" remained the question. Although the politician, politicians said it would never happen, my father saw the inevitable and announced that we would go to private school. I remember telling one of my best friends about my father's private school idea. His parents were rumored to be the neighborhood liberals. His mother was an artist. John's parents said that he and his sister would attend the integrated schools. John's family were the first white people I knew, other than my mother, who thought that segregation was wrong. In retrospect, my father was probably just ranting. And the Hartleys, John's family, were probably just being pragmatic. Both our families were working class and did not have any money to pay private school tuition. Moreover, the only private school in town was Catholic. In nineteen sixty, my parents had supported a Republican for president for the first time in their lives because John Kennedy was a Catholic. The idea of nuns teaching us was as foreign to them as was our going to a school with black children. Throughout junior high school, we waited, but "it" still did not come. Two friends and I, in one Friday study hall, cooked up the idea of transferring to the Thirty-third Avenue School, the black school. I was a liberal and thought it was time for integration. My two friends were probably just motivated by the idea of making the news and upsetting their parents. Our plan was to tell our parents that weekend and asked, then asked to be transferred and call the New Orleans television stations. As it happened, however, none of us was brave enough to broach the subject at home. On Monday, my friends laughed it off, before long they had stopped talking to me. While I was still in junior high, integration caused me to lose a job. For several years, my father had employed me as a janitor at the National Guard Armory for Friday Night Wrestling. It was a great job. I had free admission, ate all the parched peanuts I wanted, and met all the wrestlers, including gorgeous George. But the National Guard had to stop sponsoring segregated events, so the Dixie, Davidson Guardsmen closed the wrestling matches and I needed a new job. I got a newspaper route across town. My first customers on the route were residents of a boarding house, as well as the landlady and her cook. Everyone was white, except the cook. The cook was very nice and always paid me on time. The landlady was always hard to find on Friday afternoons when I came to collect. But one Friday, after I had delivered the paper to some boarders and to the cook, the landlady told me I must always deliver her newspaper before the cooks. I answered that I saw the other lady first. The landlady grew irate with me and responded that the cook is a nigger, not a lady. I handed her the paper and retreated, forgetting to collect any money. Such racist, rigid codes of conduct were stupid, obviously, to me. My last year of junior high was in nineteen sixty-two and sixty-three. In the fall of sixty-two, James Meredith was admitted to Ole Miss. President Kennedy federalized the National Guard to preempt Governor Ross Barnett from using the guard against the desegregation. My father was now a US Army sergeant. Although his armory threw the Confederate flag, his unit- his unit was despised because they were working for President Kennedy. My father was a good soldier. He followed orders and counseled his young troops to remain calm and not to refuse to serve. Probably for the first time in his life, he was treated like a pariah. The local whites would ride by the armory and yell obscenities. When my father and two other guardsmen went to the bank to deposit their checks, they were cursed and spat upon. I began high school in the fall of 1963, still waiting for integration. Like most teenagers, I was in turmoil and very insecure. But life in Mississippi was in turmoil and very insecure. Medgar Evers had been, had been gunned down in the summer of 1963. The march on Washington seemed glorious to me that August. Being a Southern Baptist, I knew good preaching when I heard it, and Dr. King's speech was powerful. My father and I had words over King, concluding with my father's threat to disown me. That turbulent year ended with President Kennedy's assassination. I was shocked by it, but the hatred of Kennedy was so strong in Mississippi that only my Catholic friends wept. In 1964, I was intensely interested in the presidential election. That November, a civic club recruited me to report county voting returns to the television networks. The circuit clerk, who was also the voter registrar, was quite gracious to me on election evening and happy to relate the returns of the golden water sweep of our county from my phone call to NBC. But the more fascinating lesson that evening was hearing the clerk explain how the poll tax and voter registration actually worked. He explained that he and the other local political leaders paid the $2 poll tax for all white voters that they considered friends. Naturally, they never paid the tax for a black voter. Then the clerk gave me a literacy test he administered to the black voters. He asked me to interpret some incomprehensible section of the Mississippi Constitution. I failed. He laughed and then gave me the white test, which he announced that I had passed because I was the white right color. As high school continued, I grew more and more dismayed with the South. The accumulated effects of the lynchings in Poughkeepsie and Greenwood, the demonstrations in Jackson, the Birmingham school bombing, the synagogue bombing in Meridian, Medgar Evers's murder, the beating at the William Petchus Bridge in Selma, the murder of Viola LeUzo, the beatings of the Freedom Riders, Vernon Dahmer's murder not far from home, and especially the gruesome, Neshoba County murders of James Cheney, Andrew Goodman, and Michael Schwerner had caused me to become, in my junior year, the commie of my high school. The story goes on from there in terms of subsequent events, but I'm, and I'm just gonna pick out one, one other one that points out the kind of hero theme in some of these stories. In my senior year, I took, in college, he ended up going to Mississippi State, if I remember correctly. I took the law boards and was notified by Ole Miss that my acceptance would be automatic upon application. He had wanted to go to Ole Miss Law School. My childhood dream of becoming an Ole Miss law student was virtually in hand, but Mississippi was not in my future. Instead, I decided to join Vista. The application required written recommendations. The only one that I remember soliciting was the one that I was most proud of being able to seek. It came from my mother's first cousin, May Jewel, and her husband, Roy. I used them as references because of their bravery in their own school desegregation struggle. Roy was a lineman for Mississippi Power. Their four children attended Beacon Street Elementary, the same crowded school that I had attended in the third grade. When I was in college, it was announced that Beacon Street would be desegregated. As she took her children to school on that first day, May Jewel was threatened by the Klan. That evening, she told Roy about the incident. The next day, Roy took his, the children to school. After he escorted them inside, he returned to the street and confronted the Klan. His physical presence was imposing, but it was his bearing, his moral courage, and his courage, his moral outrage and his courage which really intimidated them. After that, the Klan left Beacon Street Elementary School alone. Whether Roy and May Jewel's recommendation helped me be accepted into Vista, I will never know, but their inspiration gave me the gumption to join Vista. The final part of the essay is a reflection, having gone through now the full course of career, which of course, you know, did involve law teaching and particularly in civil rights and other similar causes. You know, just here's the closing part. In my work, I've had the privilege of working with Judge Robert Carter, Judge Constance Baker, Joseph Delane Jr., and others involved with Brown, Brown and civil rights. Frankly, I feel extraordinarily lucky to have been able to live a life so different from that of other white boys from Mississippi. I cannot really explain why, but I know that in 1954, Brown started me on a path that no one living in the housing projects in Laurel, Mississippi could ever have imagined. The supper, supper table in my home is much different from the one that I grew up at. Yes, there's a mother who is both spiritual and an advocate for social justice. We also have far too much broccoli and cauliflower and not enough biscuits, let alone tomato gravy. Yes, there is a father at the table who rants about the president. But there is no question that everyone at the table knows the true meaning of Brown v. S. Board. Our daughters think nothing of having sleepover with or going out with black friends. Our whole family marched with 47,000 people, mostly African-Americans, against the Confederate flag flying over our statehouse. We have all demonstrated against the death penalty. I never did become a civil rights lawyer, but Brown has changed me and my family forever.
Thank you both again. That concludes the time that we have for the program. If you have any questions, we definitely think of both of the authors wouldn't mind addressing those out in the lobby as we proceed that way. I do have a small gift for both of you. Actually, it's not a small gift, it's a very heavy heavy gift.
A tennis ball.
Yes, it is. And I'll give these to you on behalf of the library. Small token of our appreciation for you being here with us today and sharing a wonderful, wonderful book. Thank you both. And finally, I'd like to thank you to our audience members today. We do a drawing for a free copy of today's book, La Tessa Harson. So we're gonna do a drawing for that.
You're gonna do it.
And winner is Bill Richards.